When I got the agenda, it was not there. Mr. Doherty told me, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, that I could come down to the town hall to see what it was. I sent him an email saying, is this the document? From Mr. Shanti Wolf dated February 13th. He said, yes, that was. This was in your file in May when I came to this very town meeting to take pictures of the file. It's dated February. They had more than enough time to submit anything for this hearing. This has been, I've been coming to meetings, listening since February. This deck was built a year ago, April. I don't, I would like to understand what this document even is and why the appeal was even granted and why this meeting tonight now again is being continued.
I'm not, I don't know what-
At that meeting, you said when the meeting would be tonight. Everybody said, here's when the meeting is. Everybody agreed. They agreed. I'm here.
We, we expected a meeting tonight, ma'am. They contacted our administrative secretary assistant and asked for continuance. It was a personal matter, right Jim?
I'm not certain what I can go into, but they are out of state at the moment.
You're out of state.
For a family situation.
I, I, I think the board needs to know, you know, more information.
They are out of state, I'm not going to call the liars, but I literally just live next door to them and all their vehicles are there. And maybe they are, I saw them all weekend. And I'm sorry, I would have liked some notice. I would not have came all the way up here, which is why I asked twice. Please explain to me what that, what that little notation about continuance means. I'm not trying to be rude, I just want this over with. I don't know why the appeal was even granted. I've asked multiple times and I have not got an answer yet. Nothing changed from when you made a ruling the first time.
Can I explain something?
Yes, excuse me.
The, the document that you saw in May, people had not seen.
But it was in the file.
We did not see it.
No, that, the fact that it was in the file is a, an error on the part of the person who I'm, I'm filling in for.
But it's directed to the Doherty's, they must, they saw it.
They saw it, but the-
We didn't.
ZVA never saw it.
So let me-
I found out when, the night before the last meeting-
I actually sent it in my email to all of you on May 27th, citing that exact document. And at the April meeting, if you go back and watch the videos, I brought it up multiple times, that there was notes from the building inspector and from the DES. And the chairman told me, no ma'am, I don't have any of that. And I said, it's there, I've seen them, I've read them. I brought it up multiple times and I sent you letters and even attached them. It's not my issue if nobody's read my letters since February. They were there.
All I know is that I was informed the night before that that had not been in the, the packet that was presented-
That is correct.
-for the planning, to the ZVA for their original hearing. Otherwise, the, the other items on there would have had to have been fulfilled.
So nobody goes through the file at all? When I say, and it even says-
That is-
And even in January, when the chairman gave them a special exemption, it said with the approval of the building inspector, in January. The building inspector sent this in February, not approving the special exemption. So I, I'm not on the board, but I don't understand why, if you watch the timeline, it's all right there in black and white, right in the file.
No, all I can tell you ma'am is-
You're talking about a deck, not building a house.
All I can tell you is nobody in this board saw it. I, I apologize for that, and that's what it is. That's why we discussed it last month.
And nobody had any common courtesy to let me know that, don't waste your time coming up tonight because we're going to give them another continuance.
I, excuse me, I sent you an email.
And I asked you what that meant. And you said, the board can possibly do a continuance.
Well, I, I can't speak for the board and say the board will be continuing.
But you already told me they weren't even showing up. And, and can I approach you and give you this picture? I would just like to show you when, on the other meetings, when you said, nothing affects me at my property and all of you were on his property. This is a picture I took this weekend, feel free to pass it around. That is my view, with them big tying these walls so that they don't fall on our head, 15 inches from my property. I've never asked for the deck to be removed, all I've asked is for some common courtesy. And it's, and obviously all their neighbors and stuff, but this was not happening. You wanted that idea.
I see that mic up here, Mike. Thank you.
Just want this whole part.
Kevin Ross, 18 Wilders Grove. My wife says herpes, I'll say mine.
Want to pass that down?
I've watched all your meetings since January. You guys should have an entire package. This woman who was doing his job, don't come here and tell us you don't have anything. We clawed from day one in January, trying to seek some of this information. We have been two meetings behind you because we could not get documents. Okay? And here, we don't even know why this thing isn't going forward. If you were missing documents, or Doherty was, he's had 30 days, it doesn't take long to fill out another variance. I read the Shoreline Protection Act. My wife has asked you direct questions, numerous times, numerous ways. She has sent you so many emails and documents, you're probably pissed at her. The simple question was this. Have you guys even made a ruling on whether there was an existing deck? Because I know the town hall says none of you has pulled the house fold up. None of you has reviewed to see if there were permits. None of you has looked at satellite photos. None of you has determined and ruled there was an existing deck. Shoreline Protection says there is no more new building going on there. Another thing my wife has mentioned? It is in the flood zone. Check the state maps, check your own maps. You want to see the lake right now? That lake has a storm wall around it. Where that lake was when you came to look at the property is not the high water line. Right now, it is up to that foundation of that deck. Right now, we're still two feet below flood line. I've been here 28 years, I have seen it. Three feet up our stairs, that could put it flush with that deck. You were not building in a flood zone, you're building in a lake. That beach, it's a sand bottom. So is ours, ours is completely underwater, we're this much lower than them. Our whole beach, all the way up to our chairs sitting here, is underwater. Not one of you has answered my wife's question. Did you look at the flood maps? Did you even look at documents to even prove it was existed? You've dissed my wife since January. Not a single one of you has answered a single direct question. I'm asking you a direct question now and you're going to answer it or you're on record, no. And when somebody says, why are we so angry? In 28 years, you have let everybody build illegally right up to our property line. So when Jeff makes remarks that for 17 inches, they all have the same as us. They built illegally, you come in front of these boards and you do nothing. I eat their water. You've seen the joke of a house next to us that's so big? Where did you think a football field of water goes? These 30 inches from the property line are 24-inch eaves.
Enough Kevin.
The house across the street we came to, what? You guys sent him a letter for years saying there was a foundation over the property line. We came to the meeting, that's our property line. They sued us and took our land. So when we come to a board like this, it is personal. When somebody builds up to our property line that they have for 28 years and they have no land and then they're stuck up there, it is personal.
The only other thing I want to mean-
So, wait a minute. I want to question you. Did you look at the flood maps? And did you determine by any facts or documents that there was an existing deck? And if not, I'd like the vote to discuss it and hold on that stuff. Because you're missing a lot of steps and you haven't checked off all the boxes. Because I read the Shoreline Protection, you can't be any of it. If the structure was not there before, you cannot have a new structure down there. And if there is something bigger than the infrastructure down there, it can't go without a variance. I saw the first meeting. If I was you guys and I had a folder and I saw an existing deck here and they built a new one 15 inches off the property line? Bell sure went off in your head. Your rubber stamping it before you got to the office. Were we going to be the last ones after you decided? Because you didn't decide on that meeting. You signed it and you went to set it on the bill inspector, didn't have a problem. He did have a problem, he sent it to you. None of you has got it. And you wonder why you're frustrated? What is he missing? A new application for a variance for wetland shore protection? What is missing? What are you giving him time to come up with that we don't have? You put us at a disadvantage for months. When I said last meeting, it wasn't his fault, he spent nights. It was whoever provided you your folder. My town would have made them tear it down at the risk of a single forested. Who would build like that in my town? But it's your job, or his, to give you a full folder. And it's your job to read it. Don't come in here and stop reading my wife's stuff. Give her the respect. I know you're pissed off and Mike Fortin and everybody else have run around and said, pissed off stuff from him. And he should have removed from the board, he knows them all personally. That's how I feel, that's my piece.
The only other thing I wanted you to say is, the building inspector did send a note on May 11th saying, the applicant has ignored our building regulations and constructed the deck without a permit. The structure is built within the Shoreline Protection District and as far as I can see, the applicant has offered nothing to further the intent of the ordinance with regards to the wetland protection. And that was a note on May 11th. The May 8th one was actually even more stronger, asking why you even granted an appeal. So-
You know, I, I have a question.
I'm going to answer my question.
I've, I've gone over with the building inspector a couple of times. Why did he not just have it torn down? Why, we have, we can't force it to come down. We don't have that authority.
Because they had to go to here to get a variance and then that's your job-
But he denied everything, right at the beginning.
That's the way it works.
And gave it to us to do what?
The applicant has a right to apply for a, or a master appeal. The applicant has a right after the building is pre-ruled.
That is correct.
Hey, I want, Mr. Rossi, please. We want to hear you, but don't yell.
Basically, what I was told by the building inspector multiple times is that's the way it works on the lake.
That is correct.
It's a non-conforming lot. The only job he has is to say it's a non-conforming lot and deny it. They have to go for a variance in that Shoreline Protection Act.
That is correct.
That's not his job anymore. What he told me multiple times is he'd be more than willing to come, but you, he has to be asked to come. He can only deny it, which is what he did. Unless I'm wrong, that's what he's told me.
No, that's, you're absolutely correct.
I'm not, I'm not pretending to understand the rules, I do not. And I apologize for our frustration, but we are frustrated. It's a deck, it's not a house.
Right, right.
We understand, we understand.
Any more discussion, gentlemen?
Is there anyone else here who wants to speak?
There's a motion on the floor to move the public hearing to next month, August.
Is there a second?
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
You want to take a poll, please?
Mr. Gibbs?
Hi.
Mr. French?
Hi.
Mr. Hamel?
No.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Cozak?
Yes.
Court of one, passes.
We're going to move on to the preliminary review for Sharon McQueeney of Chelmsford, Mass. Just so there's, there's a few people in the audience here tonight. The, on a preliminary hearing, just so everybody's aware of it, we take no questions from the public. You can listen in a public meeting, hopefully that these two will go to the next month. Then is when the public can make comments and, okay, alright. And the, the board should just take a look at this, take a look at the plans. We'll have the applicants come up and talk for a couple of moments, explain what they're doing. And the board should ask questions, clarifying any questions they have. And who is representing?
Sharon McQueeney. Just one comment, when you look at the drawing, it says the proposed addition in porch. It, it doesn't show, we're taking off the existing porch. So when you look and see where it says, that's eight feet. Then the little porch on the front, that. So what we're doing is tearing off the existing porch. And adding eight feet. Taking off eight, putting back 16.
And this, this is the existing, can you come up, come up here one second, please? I'm sorry. I did look at it, but I did have a question here. Is this, this is the area?
No, back here at the house. Existing two-bedroom home.
Okay.
So you can see-
So you're, you're doing what here, exactly?
We're, we're adding eight feet to the house plus a porch. That's six feet for the porch.
Okay.
And we got the, this has already been through shoreline.
So they are making it bigger than ours. I thought we weren't supposed to do that.
Do, do you have the Shoreline Protection permit?
Um, I don't have a copy. We did burn it.
It was one of the questions I had.
I can send it to you.
Okay, alright. Send it to our secretary, okay. Go ahead, questions from the board?
Uh, there was that app. The garage.
Right here.
The garage?
The garage addition.
That you have?
This is the extension out there.
It looks like it's going to go closer to the property line.
No, we're just chopping a piece off. It's 20 by 20, it'll be four, we'll chop six feet off.
So, so the, the portion closest to the property line, it's going to stay exactly where it is? You're just going to chop off the-
So we have access to the property, yes.
So you're chopping this piece off, but you, because the way that this is drawn, it looks like the, the new garage is going to go right to the property line?
Well, the existing, the existing garage goes right to the property.
Oh, so what's this other line? What's that line?
Do you understand it, Mike?
No, I'm trying to follow this.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
So this is the existing one right here?
Yeah, well, the whole thing is existing, but my question is, does the existing one go to that line?
So the, the whole square out by the street is the garage.
Okay.
So in order to have act, there's no access to the, we're just chopping six feet off the garage.
So you're taking it back six feet?
Correct, this way.
This way?
Right.
So the shaded areas, what's going to stay?
So the shaded area will be what's left.
Okay, and then you're doing something over here?
And then at the house, we're, we're doing an ex, a, an eight-foot extension.
Going this way?
Correct, towards the street.
So this piece right here?
Correct.
Yeah.
And you, and you can see that, if I'm not encroaching on this, we have enough room for the front setback, about 90 feet from the street. The variance is because we're, we're going to go no closer to the property line, we're just going to go forward, towards the street.
So, so you're going to be, a longer distance will be closer to the, there'll be, there'll be, a, 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 more, more depth to how, when you're close to the property line. The, the distance isn't going to change.
The distance to the side marks is the side-
Right, but, but it's going to be, going to be longer.
Stretch it towards the street. So the, the expansion of the property is conforming, but the side setbacks, when we pull it forward, it's that addition will be non-conforming, so.
I got another question on the-
A question for a second. Just before you go on to that, is that non-conforming if he goes no closer to the line?
Is it non-conforming? I, I, that's what he-
Because he meets the already-
Right.
I heard that conversation with Shanti.
That's what I was going to say, we should probably talk to-
He told me that because the addition is non-conforming, then that makes the addition non-conforming.
Right, so he needs a-
Even though it stays within, it's still, okay.
Yes.
He's extending a non-conforming structure. Correct, but he's not making it any closer to the property lines than the existing structure.
He's not making it more non-conforming.
No, I understand that, I just didn't know if he had to go for variance for that because it's already, it's already within the line.
He does because he's in the Shoreline Protection.
Well, I think if we grant-
That's right.
-the special exception, then we're done, I think.
But he also needs a Shoreline Protection.
Right, well, he said he already got that from the state.
That's, that's the DES, he has it. He doesn't have from the town yet. If you look at the denials on the, on the request.
Yeah, that, that was my next, that was my question. Why does he need something for?
Shoreline Protection.
29, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, but this is what Shanti, the building inspector put down.
Mr. Hamel? He now has it.
What, the, the Shoreline Protection?
Right, he didn't, he must not have had it at the time that he went for the permit.
Yeah, burned it.
But, but I, I would think-
But this is, but he's looking for the local and also for the town Shoreline Protection.
Right.
But he would then, if, if we do not allow the special exception, he then would need a variance for the side yard, which would be 50 and 3.
Does he?
Oh, it, it's going to be, it, it's not 25 feet from the-
Right, yeah, none of them are, yeah, exactly. But, you know, that's the other thing here, I'm going to follow what our building inspector was looking for in the special exemption from section X1, which is the non-conforming and then the Shoreline Protection.
But, but that there, he's not, uh, can you have the west provision?
It's, it's, and when you look at that, the, the section, it's Article 3A.
Yeah, and I, I don't see how that applies.
Yeah, I read it before we came, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that applies, but I do think if we, if we don't grant a special exception, then he would need a variance to 50 and 3.
I don't know.
That would be the other way around.
I, I don't know, Shanti seemed to say, he didn't put any notes in here referencing that, yeah.
So I would say for an action item, let's get clarity.
Yeah, yeah.
Clarification.
In your board packet for the public hearing, you will have the citation, all the citations.
I, I got a couple of questions. Yeah, can you? This is the new part here.
No, this is where we get-
Okay, that is not going parallel with the lot line. So we're going to be closer to the lot line, down to three feet. Wait, here it's four and a half feet. That's the actual house now, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you're four and a half feet, so you're coming to three feet down at this end. That's what it says here, three feet on the addition.
Four feet on the other side.
Right, you got five feet here, it comes down to four feet. So you're going another foot closer to the lot line than what the existing building is.
What's that, Mike?
I think, I'll wait till he's done, but I think-
Okay, for that, that, I, I can read the drawing.
Right.
Okay, over here. This part is existing with the lines. You're adding that part.
No, I'm, no. The whole thing is existing. We're removing that part. Right, so the 20 by 20 goes-
So you're not moving it from the lot line.
Correct. No, it's not. It's in the same footprint.
So you're removing all of that.
Six feet.
Not by this plan. Not by what that says.
It has to be reduced from 20 by 20 to 14 by 20.
Well, this doesn't measure 14 by 20. So there's something wrong with that picture. Right, yeah. That, well, what is this? That says existing garage there.
Yeah, the whole square.
Right. So if you're adding this and you're keeping it there, that's bigger than 14 by 20. I don't have a tape measure right here, but, you have a tape?
I got a scale. If you put, put it on the right side, there's a, there's a 20 scale on there.
Yeah, 20. There's five feet there. So that's 20 feet. See, I, I don't-
So this just needs to be adjusted so it accurately reflects the 14? As I can see with-
It, it's not drawn correctly.
What's the overhangs? That, that line there is the overhang.
It, it's showing a 20 by 18. Or if you go up there, it's 20 by 20.
These two lines are the roof overhang. This structure from that line to that line is-
Well, why doesn't it have lines through the whole thing? It says it's all existing.
No, no, the, the hash is the remaining portion of the building. This, this, all that's in white is going, is going away.
It says garage to be reduced from 20 by 20.
With the overhangs, okay?
So the 20 by 20 is including?
Right.
By 20 long, okay? So now, if we're taking six feet of the physical garage, which includes the two-foot overhang on that side.
He said the six feet's coming over here.
No, no, no.
It's not, so it's going to stay on the lot line?
The overhang goes to the lot.
You're not removing that.
No, not the overhang. And the structure itself is two feet off of the physical vertical wall. So basically you have your overhang shown and the inner line-
So 14 feet from the lot line. That's the overhang, that's where our measurements come from, is the overhang.
Alright, well then, the 20 by 20 is including the overhang.
Right.
The physical garage is the inner line here. From this line right here to this line right here are the walls.
Yeah, what day of the week, what, what day is it?
Which is next week, August?
That's showing 16 feet.
Oh, I might just be coming home then.
This doesn't match that, that's all I'm trying to say.
I'll be here.
You're not explaining that correctly.
You're going to be here?
Well, yes, because if you go 20, the way, the overhang to overhang is 20, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's 20, but you're going to reduce it to 14. Where are you taking six feet off?
Right here. This, this portion is going away, okay?
Right.
Which is actually eight with the overhang.
Yeah, but there's still going to be overhang on that side, nothing matters, right?
If you're taking six feet off, why do you need a variance to take the part of the building off?
We're not asking for a variance. The variance is back here. The variance is for this addition here. What he's doing is trying to do that so he can get through here. As you can see, this, this is barely a walkway between the property line on the side of the existing block. Can you give a piece of the house, if you call it, I don't know? No, we didn't. Yeah, so the, the variance is back here. Everything that we're coming here for before-
So the only thing, so this is getting, giving more space back to the line, I'm less worried about this.
The new part of the addition.
Right, that's the closest-
This is what I'm trying to figure out here.
What is the actual measurement?
It's kind of a cluster, yeah.
Well-
Why isn't it on the plan?
Is it this little piece?
To show actually what's there. Every corner should be there.
They added to the drawing for Mr. McQueeney.
Okay.
It wasn't the requested, it was the time, so.
Well, that, that's, the numbers we should be looking at is exactly what's there, not what's proposed. We, we want the proposed numbers too, but we want the actual, what is there.
I think we should do a site rock on it.
And where's the septic system?
Frank? I, I think it depends on-
The septic system is, um, here.
Okay, so that should be on here for us to see as well.
Because I'm not supposed to be talking, I'm only an alternate. Oh, okay. Oh, I can't for this part, okay.
I can actually bring, there's a separate septic plan.
Okay, yeah, that would help.
Septic here, okay.
Well, you could just add it to that, because the septic plan doesn't have all this stuff.
Okay.
Right. You start putting too much information on it.
Right.
At this scale especially, it becomes.
Okay, yeah, that's the only thing there that, just measurements off the existing building.
But Frank did bring up an interesting other question. The house is not parallel to the property line, correct?
Correct.
So that you are getting on the side end closer to the property line as you go longer.
Probably by a couple inches, yes.
I think I would like to see that.
Well, that's what he just requested.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're gonna be doing.
Okay. Okay, so you're gonna give that, those numbers? Okay.
Can I have a question? So I just want, this is just clarity.
Yep.
Are you just adding this piece here or from this line over?
From that line over.
From the line over.
Full eight-foot addition and then just a porch.
Okay, okay.
But you're also taking a porch away?
Correct.
Now, how wide, is the porch the same width as the house, or is it more like the existing porch?
The current one.
It should be, the existing porch should be on the plan also.
Well, you see, you're looking at a 20 by 42 box. The first eight feet of each end of the box is a shed roof. So. So if we drew another line that said this is the porch. So.
Okay, so when you talk about getting rid of a porch, it's over here, not over here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that detail would be helpful.
Eight feet and entrance.
Okay, because generally on a block plan, you're not showing.
Yeah, but we're looking for what there is compared to what you want to put there.
Excuse me, so if I have a picture of the house, we'd better explain it. Jake keeps calling it the porch. It's a porch in our backyard.
Yeah, that's the one.
So the porch in the back is in front of the shed roof. It's fallen down. It's completely fallen apart. So we'll be moving that from the house, rebuilding and putting the eight feet on.
Yeah, so it'll be a demolition part of it. Take out eight feet, put back 16.
So you're gonna put 16 plus this additional narrower piece?
So what you're requesting is that we put a line here.
Yeah.
That's the existing porch roof, as you can see, right there. And then, so we tear off that porch, tear off eight feet.
Put on 16.
Put on 16.
Plus add a porch in addition to that.
Plus add the eight feet porch, correct.
Okay, okay. I understand.
Do we have enough to move on?
I think, I don't know, I think they know what we're looking for.
Yeah, we all set?
I think we're set.
And you won't have any problem getting that done for our meeting in a month from now?
Would you care to enumerate so I can have it in the minutes what deficiencies you'd like to see addressed?
We need the, to show the existing parts of the structure that are gonna be torn down. And we also need to see the distance from the house to the lot lines.
Existing house to the.
Existing house and also the proposed house.
Right.
Both.
The proposed is on this. That's the 3.1.
Okay.
But it doesn't show the existing.
And we want to see where the septic is.
Okay, you're good?
We all set? I'm gonna close the hearing at 8:05 PM.
That's the preliminary.
I need the preliminary here.
So now you need a motion to move to a hearing on August whatever.
Nine.
Nine, so August ninth, okay, yes. Next, there's a preliminary hearing for Jeffrey Carr.
Mr. Trail, does a motion?
We need to vote on moving to the.
Moving to the next month?
Yeah.
Yes, I, did someone like to make the motion?
I made the motion, but.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
Thank you for coming.
Take a vote.
You have, just say all.
Okay, all who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess it's unanimous.
Yep, okay. I'll get this stuff done sooner or later.
A little cheat sheet for yourself, Chuck.
Why'd you say so?
A little flash card.
Okay, now a preliminary hearing, Jeffrey Carr of Newton, New Hampshire. Mr. Carr, would you like to take our, do you have a representative here speaking for you? Please introduce yourself and who you represent.
Vernon Dingman, representing Jeffrey Carr.
Do you have a card? Do you have a card?
Yes.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the plans, maybe guys, while he's talking? Yeah, okay.
I'm planning up, sorry. Which number is this one?
1A?
There it is. I think we're all ready soon.
The cards are proposing, there's an existing structure there. When originally built, during this whole engineering process and so forth, surveyor was hired and property survey was verified and so forth. And the existing structure is actually encroaching on the abutting property. It was built over the lot line. A little over a foot on the front corner and almost two feet on the back side. So the cards hired me to get the shore land permit and the septic system permit that you have in that packet. And with the shore land permit, we propose to shift the house. Basically, it's an old enough dwelling that they want to do a tear down and a rebuild. Same footprint, okay? But basically, get it five feet onto the property now instead of a couple feet over the property line. So eliminating, you know, encroachments and just the aggravation between landowners as part of the shore land permitting and so forth. We have a letter from Elizabeth McNeil, who's the abutting owner and so forth, stating that she would like to see this transpire also. Obviously, you know, pull the existing dwelling off of her property is a good thing and so forth. So we've gone through all the motions. You have the approved DES septic permit in front of you. You have the approved shore land permit in front of you to perform what the plan that's shown is there, which will be to do a tear down, shift the foundation over so that it's five feet off of the northeast sideline there. And then, you know, basically, it'll be, in its new position, it'll be 26 feet off of the other sideline and 49.7 feet off the closest front property line. Because it's not a rectangular property. It's a little bit skewed property lines, but. So basically, you know, by all the state approvals and so forth, if the board, after this preliminary hearing with the formal hearing, votes to approve, it'll basically bring this new proposed structure into conforming, more conforming, I shouldn't say totally conforming, just because all of these lots down in these ponds are pre-existing non-conforming. There's not a one that would ever be built that would meet your current zoning, but they were also all created long before that. So we're trying to deal with what we have to work with as best that we can and give the town and the abutters and the cards the best possible package. I mean, we have a, you know, the best modern treatment, septic system being put in there. It's a Presby AES treatment tube system, new septic tank. They just drilled the new well that's behind the abutting, their abutting home. And basically, they want to downsize and move into this property and transmit the existing house to their daughter and her husband and their new grandchild hopefully arriving, not too in the distant future, so. That's.
The septic, the leach field can be inside of the well radius?
Yes. Because that well was put in, in 2019, and Mrs. McNeil had to sign a well radius waiver, which doesn't, which basically negates her ability to force a 75-foot. If that well was put in prior to 1989, I would have to, a matter of fact, her well went in after this plan was actually approved. It was a very recent, it was very, at the very, I think it was either November or December of 2019, she drilled that well, so. Because I did the project right across the street, which was Lot 37, for Mr. Bork, which came before this board last October, and you guys granted that particular approval. And his septic system is probably another 20 feet closer to that well. But being a drilled and sealed and grouted well, I've designed septic systems to owners own drilled wells as close as 15 feet and never ever had a problem because of being a drilled well. You'd never get away with that with a dug well, but a properly constructed drill well, the state DES has given me approval as close as 15 feet to a leach bed.
But the only question I have, looking at the denial from the building inspector, and the very last one, it says, and I, just because I'm not sure what this is, it says permit required for New Hampshire DES. Is that the shoreline protection?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because he didn't state it there, which is like, okay. And I know that's in the package, okay.
Right, right. Both permits have been obtained, and you should have copies of them.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, some of the same kind of question I have. If we do not approve the special exception, then they would need a variance to the side yard. That would be another way to go.
I believe so.
And I mean, that might be, you know, you could add that to the request as a possible backup to what you're asking for.
I had actually filled out a variance application to begin with, and then I guess after the building inspector reviewed or whatever, he was the one that requested that I fill out the special exception application. I have copies of both right here if you need to see them, so.
I mean, the special exception is.
I think what he was citing is where it was pre-existing non-conforming lot, basically by making it more conforming with the proposal that we have before you. It's actually lessening a variance situation as opposed to making it worse. So I think that he changed from the initial variance, like I say, that I had filled out, to the special exception after all the permits had come through, because it's actually more conforming now as proposed than it was in previous, or in its existing condition, so.
Yeah, you know, Roger, what you just asked, that's a question. I think we have a chauncey, because, you know, if you deny it, does it need a variance if not?
I mean, it seems like, you know, there's sort of two paths that the project could get approved.
Yes.
One would be the special exception.
Right.
And then, if we grant that, that's, he can go forward.
Right.
The other one is if we were to deny that for some reason, he would ask for a side yard variance.
And what they're asking for is, where is my documents? I get so much junk here.
You have the special exception and the variance.
Right, yeah, the non, the.
Have that paperwork with you, if you could give me a copy?
Sure.
You don't have that? Sort of looking for the non-conforming and also the shoreline protection permit. Which is the local one, the town.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, we're all in agreement?
This is the whole package that I originally submitted. It's double sided. But that's, I've gone through the whole procedure for a variance to the, you know, and I changed the special exception.
I like to keep as my paperwork in the folder as possible.
Sure.
And I'll give copies to all.
I don't know, is this the application for the variance that you filled out?
Yep.
What I'm saying, actually, but you can't get a variance to 11-3. It's either a special exception is granted or it's not granted. If it's not granted, then you would need a variance.
Like I said, it was a matter, we went to the building inspector to begin with, and he advised us one way, and then you have to advise the other. So, I mean, you have copies of both, basically.
Right.
But the thing is, we need one for 15-3, a variance from 15-3 to the side yard. If for some reason we were not to approve.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I was in that package, it's 11, and I was citing the.
The things that he's, right.
They actually met the requirements from the building inspector. The list of the variances that he refers to.
Uh-huh, right.
Not, 15-3 was not on the building inspector's.
Right.
So.
And if we grant the special exception, then it won't be a problem.
Right, then it won't be a problem, right. So you're saying that, are you saying, Roger, fill out the variance because we might deny the special exemption?
It's sort of like, you know, suspend it in the.
But, but you know. As history shows us and working down in that environment, we, you know, we're pretty lenient as far as that goes, yeah.
Question? The house is the same size, right? That's what it looks like. My only thing is, I'd like to see this 25 here, and it'll give a little more room on that side.
If I kick at the edge for a foot, I'll have to go back to the statement.
Why?
This is the plan that they approved.
Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to get it off the lot.
No, I understand.
Because you're gonna be within four feet of the lot line.
No, it's fine, it's shown.
That's off, that's off the foundation. Our measurements come from the roof line.
Yeah, but being gable ends, I don't think that there's.
You're still a few inches. Yeah, but make sure when you give that number to us for the variance, it comes off of the
But he may not.
Not the foundation.
He may not need that variance if we give him the special exception.
Okay.
I think that's, that's the whole point. I mean, I think that's an option if he'd like to fill it out, but I think if we stick with the special exemption and that's approved, the variance is null. We all agree? Yeah.
So we don't think that we need any additional information to go to public hearing, do you?
I don't believe so.
Nope.
Would anybody?
I have one on my list from Mr. Hamel, and that is the variance from section 15.
It's entirely up to you, sir, you know.
And that is not a requirement, that was a suggestion. That, if, he doesn't have to, and if we give him the special exception, he doesn't need it.
Lost typing for me.
Thank you very much. Again, I offered any, Mr. and Mrs. Carr, if anybody'd like to speak, but we're happy what we have here. Okay.
Make a motion to move the, this item to public hearing for August.
Nine.
Nine.
August ninth, yeah, okay.
Second.
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 Oh, sorry, I thought Mr. Gibbs had.
So three people seconded.
All who's in favor?
It kind of blended into the.
Aye.
No problem.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
That's unanimous.
And we close the review for the cards. Thank you very much. Okay, okay. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the minutes for last month.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of, oh, wait a minute.
June.
Yeah, okay, it says, the agenda says April 12, but we want to accept the minutes of June 14.
Okay. On my sheet, it says June 14.
Right.
Oh, I don't.
On the agenda, it has the wrong.
No, it doesn't. I have the wrong agenda.
It says June 14.
Yeah, no, I got the wrong agenda. Somehow I lost my right agenda. In all of these papers.
Anybody have any changes they'd like to make to the minutes? Any revisions?
No. I looked at that, I'm good.
Yeah, but I ran them over.
I can second.
I can second.
Okay. All who's in favor of approving the minutes for June 14?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, aye. We got a couple of things here, the rules of procedure. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? The, that Jim has put together? I hope. I think he's done a wonderful job. I've. There's an education for every one of us in here. Did anybody have, did everyone have a chance to read it? We'd like to get it approved tonight.
I did. I think it puts a lot of structure around the meeting.
Definitely, yes.
We may or may not have all known about, I'll just leave it there.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
They take a while to get used to.
It, yeah, it's gonna take a while, it'll come, but it puts a lot more structure and I think that's a good thing.
And it's good to have it in one place and.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
The document that this board really needed.
One thing that you didn't see, the last copy, there's now appendix A and B. Those are the actual procedures for the preliminary reviews and the public hearing.
Yeah, I, those I thought were really great because we have a tendency. And the, the thing is that we, all the really, the questions are, more of our question should be to clarify and make sure they have all the documents and leave it at that, you know, until the public meeting. But in the past, I think we, we almost had a public meeting even though it was a preliminary. And Jim did.
So no longer would we be giving our thoughts and opinions?
That is.
Those should be during deliberation.
That's right, yeah.
Actually, that doesn't happen during the public hearing either. That happens during deliberation.
You're right.
After the close of the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's interesting.
It creates us, unlike the planning board, which spends a lot of time doing non-judicial stuff, this board is basically purely quasi-judicial. Your, your judges, thinking yourself in the black robes with the, you know, the black piece of cloth to put on your head when you address somebody. Sorry, that's a joke. That's what British judges do before they pass a death sentence. So you can't, theoretically, you can have no opinion until the end of the hearing. Then you can have at it. And I will.
That's a change.
If I have time before, you know, my time with you guys is up, I will try to do one similar for a rehearing.
Okay.
So that you have a structure for everything. But I added those because that's a sheet that I would hope either I in the future or whoever is sitting in this chair will send you on a regular basis going, yeah, we've got four public hearings, remember, this is the process.
Yeah, if, number 14 on this, on appendix B. And it's upon its conclusion, the hearing should be officially closed before the board begins its formal deliberation. Any comments among between the board members?
So once we close it, then no longer should they be talking?
That is correct. No more public comments, right? Yeah, yeah.
This is based on the, the state's OSI, Office of Strategic Initiatives, what they call.
They changed name.
They changed it, but I don't have it down yet.
No, I was noticing that on the video, well, the video conference that I attended, that there was a lot more structure than we didn't. So this is good. I'm not, I'm making sure I understand.
This gives you the structure based on what the state considers to be best practices.
Best in class, yeah.
At any point, you can waive that. You know, if you really want to have a free-for-all, you know, you can say, because this says once the meeting is open, that you hear from proponents first, opponents second, then there's a rebuttal, then there's a rebuttal. I mean, it's a very structured, I mean, we're talking the way pretty much the state Supreme Court runs, runs things. Except for the fact that you don't have a clock and you, you know, that people have to hit.
Yeah.
And yes, you're in the red, and they, at the Supreme Court, they shut off people's mics. You have X number of minutes to talk. This is a little looser than that, but it gives you a good structure to try to stick to because as we've seen, things can wander a little.
Yeah.
And this gives whoever's in that chair the ability to go, you know, wrap the gavel, bring it back to order where at this point.
Yeah, and follow the structure, take the emotion out of it.
Right. If I get a chance, I will do one for rehearings because that is, that's a separate beast.
Yeah.
I just didn't have a chance to get it done.
A question, Jim, I, you know, again, I went through and so forth, but okay, well, we're going through the five criteria to look at a variance, okay? And we've either voted up or down and so forth. And that's, that's still in public, all right?
Yep, that, that's actually the first part of your deliberation.
Right, right. And then, and then the, you're saying the first part as far as before public opinions?
No.
It's gonna be afterwards, correct?
Right.
It's part of deliberation.
Right. It's part of deliberations. You each get to state your opinion and then you really should go right into the criteria.
Okay.
Because if you don't, if you don't meet the criteria with the right number of votes, why start, you know, throwing bricks at each other?
I agree, okay. All right, okay. You know, and gentlemen, Jim and I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, we're reviewing some stuff, is that let's try to make a comment of why you said no to one of the 1 through 5s so we can get that recorded. I think it's a good idea, and when we do, actually do the, the final motion, it should be attached, why we denied it, you know? Just.
If you agree with something, you can simply, purely simply, I agree. But if you disagree, there needs to be something because if a decision or a criteria is decided it has not been met, the applicant must be told why it wasn't met. It's one of the proverbial, if everybody agrees, you know, there's not a lot in the minutes. When somebody disagrees, they have to be able to know what, you know, it wasn't just Mr. Hamel deciding he didn't like the fact that they wore purple.
Right. Can't be personal.
Right.
Right. So you, you have to be able to give concrete reasons for denial. You don't need to give concrete reasons for acceptance. And if you accept it tonight, I will pass, this is a clean copy. Does anybody have any corrections?
I have, sorry. Maybe a correction or maybe a question.
Yeah.
So in the past, we've had times where one of us, Roger was one, I was one, Frank was one, where we had a conflict of interest and couldn't vote. And according to procedure, it, it, you talked about it, if you have a conflict, that should be made prior to any commencement of any hearing if we've, if we've got a conflict, which you often have done, Roger. So should that be in the number 11 order of business? Should we have that in there where it says designated voting members?
No, that actually needs to be done before, I, I'm the chair. Okay, next up, item two. Mr. Hamel immediately raises his hand before I even say anything. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I have a conflict with this application. I'm recusing myself. And then he goes up and sits in the audience.
Because it sounds like if you look at the order of business on 11-0, that that happens before we even get to any hearings. It says salute to flag, designation of voting members, and then is there a conflict? Should the chairperson say, do we have a conflict with anyone here?
It has to go the other way because they have to recuse themselves before.
But you also.
Before the hearing, which he is.
You might only recuse yourself to the third item on the agenda, so you don't know where on the agenda that, that recusal is gonna come.
Okay. All right. And then the other thing that I had a question about, I thought, oh, it might have been, oh, it's when we talk about 13-5, the, once presentations have been done and everybody gets to talk, we, if we decide, depending on what we decide on the next hybrid versus in-person meetings, if we are gonna have hybrid, which I don't know how everyone feels about that.
Right.
We have to add a spot on that where we also have to then address people that are on Zoom or in TV land.
No, because they would get addressed the same way.
No, no. Trust me, I'm on with Homeland Security. There's specific ways, and Jim sent it to us. We have to, ahead of time, actually in the agenda that gets posted downstairs and on the website, if we are gonna allow hybrid, and now I'm going ahead of us here, probably.
All right, no good ahead.
If we are gonna allow hybrid, what Homeland Security says is it's gotta be on the agenda and it's gotta be listed the way Jim sent that letter. Are we gonna allow a chat? Are we gonna say no chat? Are we gonna allow you to listen but not participate? So depending on which thing we decide on.
But if we decide on allowing participation.
Yeah.
Then they would participate just like the people at, and at the same time as the people in the hall.
Right, but I'm saying is that should be written in, that we, if we decide to allow that, then in 13.5 discussion, then people, the chair is gonna ask if there's any abutters or anybody interested in speaking, and everybody has the input, then we have to address Mr. Zoom people, is there anyone that also makes a comment? We've got to remember to put that in.
That's the same as asking for abutters.
If we're gonna do that, we should all just sit home and have this meeting. If we're gonna let people.
A quorum has to be present.
Yeah.
And we may not even want to do that, but.
But it's something to think about.
You have, you have to address them, and it's gotta be itemized. What?
Oh.
Yes.
That's, that's the next item on the agenda.
Yes.
But that is going to be an extraordinary because while we're allowed to do that sort of at the moment, and we've got those things.
Which is very limited.
We're not certain what the state legislature is gonna do.
And they may not extend, right.
And I would rather leave that as a complete, separate aside, as a, outside the scope of the, until.
Final decision.
We have something official.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just saying that if, depending on what happens, God forbid we have now another pandemic, should it be in here due to extenuating circumstances, we may allow it or whatever.
Right. But I would rather wait until we get, please, this is what I would ask you guys.
Yeah.
Please accept these as they are tonight.
All right.
And then when the state legislature comes down.
Alter it.
Hopefully whoever is sitting here will look at you guys and go, okay.
Yep.
At this point, this is what the law is gonna read from now until it gets changed again.
Yep.
So at that point, it's appropriate, but right now, I would, I would ask you to consider that like an extraordinary.
Okay. I'll know more on Wednesday on our legal call anyway, but yeah.
So I have a question.
And I didn't have most of that information when I was typing all of this.
So Jim, that's, that's a good question. So as of right, so we, let's hypothetically, I'm not gonna say what the board's gonna vote, but let's just say they vote and we say, yes, we approve this right now.
Correct.
So there's a change that gets made by the state and they say, yes, going forward, if the town wishes, they can do X, Y, Z, whatever that is.
Exactly.
Does then, do we do an amendment to this and keep it as a separate amendment? Or does a person have to go through and alter this to include it in? How does that work?
I honestly don't believe they will do it. I'm working as if my time is up, literally roughly 30 days from today.
No, I know, I know.
The way, the appropriate way to do it would be, okay, we have new language. Ms. McCarthy came down and she said, you know, this is the language from the state, and it plugs into 13.5 perfectly. It gets, this document actually gets redone.
Okay, and then gets voted.
That gets put into 13.5, and at the end of the new bit, there's a parenthetical statement that says amended the date of the amendment.
I was wondering how that worked, okay.
So that you, you can track and.
You can track the changes backwards, right?
Yeah.
Historically.
Anything that doesn't have one of those little clauses or parentheticals.
Parenthetical.
Is a, is part of the canon of the, of the document.
Got it. I knew something was there, okay. I appreciate that.
Perfect.
Okay, are we ready?
Yeah, we.
Make a motion that we adopt.
Wait a second, Mr. Gibbs. Number 11, number, on the second thing, salute the flag. We said the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I still think it should say pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I apologize, I did not change that.
Okay.
Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. What I will do is, luckily, the computer is on during the period when, because you have it on public.
Yeah.
However.
Do we do?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
While, while Jamie is coming out and collecting the, the microphones, I will go in and change that and print out a fresh copy.
Perfect.
All I have to do is print out a new page 11.
Okay.
Beautiful.